February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. The first continued hearing is five Sheffield Place. Owners Christopher P. Funk and Donna M. Funk request a variance under one seventy-four thirty-one of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a two-hundred-square-foot shed on property located in an R-five zoning district. MAP twenty-nine, parcel one fifty, Mashpee, Mass., continued from January tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Hearings at the request of the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Christopher Corain representing Christopher and Donna Funk, they are the owners of property at five Sheffield Place. They are before this board seeking a variance for a shed. The shed is eleven feet off the property line where fifteen feet is required. Unfortunately, the shed was constructed, and it was determined after the fact that it was eleven feet from the property line. This board may recall that this project actually came before them back in December of two thousand twenty-two. The board reviewed the project. I was actually at the meeting as well, and from all of the board's comments, they were prepared to grant this variance. However, when they were looking at the plan, they noted that there was another shed that was across the property line and some fencing that was in trees that were over the property line. This board asked Mr. and Mrs. Funk to come back, take the shed off the property line, remove the fence and trees off the where they were encroaching, and come back before this board. They have done all of the things that this board has asked of them at that December twenty-two meeting, and have now come back before the board to request this, request the variance of four feet. The neighbor who would be mostly affected by the variance sent a letter to this board, I think, in the original project, supporting, had no objection. I don't think that allowing this variance is going to, you know, derogate from the intent of the bylaw or otherwise, you know, invalidate the bylaw. You know, we're talking about a shed here that's, you know, eleven feet as opposed to fifteen feet. It is, you know, two-hundred square feet where, you know, typically a hundred square feet, you could be five feet from the property line. I would also note that there is a pool that is on site, and if you were to move this shed four feet, it would be closer to the pool and certainly could create a hazard. Mr. Funk has mobility issues that he can certainly state to this board if they, if they'd like to hear from him, which could cause some safety concerns if that shed was moved closer to the pool. So I think that there is a hardship there. The shed itself is connected to utilities, so to move the shed, you'd have to disconnect all the electric and utilities. So again, I would suggest that that would be a hardship as well. But again, I think, you know, the Funks came in good faith before this board in two thousand twenty-two. The board asked them to do certain things, they've done those, and now they've come back before this board. So I'm happy to answer any questions and, you know, allow Mr. Funk to speak on his behalf if, if the board so wishes.
Why don't we read some letters in the record, and then we'll go from there? Charlie, can you read any record, any letters in the record, please?
Yep. There's a comment, David Morris, dated two-six twenty-four, relative to five Sheffield Place. Owners realized mistake after the fact. Comments from the Board of Health, received two-eight twenty-four, five Sheffield Place. Not a habitable space, no increase in septic flow, septic is on other side of house. And... We have Evan. I have the, I have the Evan stuff right here. Okay. Those are the comments, and then we have the comments from Town Planner, received previously prior to this meeting relative to five Sheffield Place. Assesses MAP one-one-seven lot three hundred. It's not so long that I cannot read the whole thing, so I will read the whole thing into the record.
Up to you, Charlie.
The applicant is requesting a variance relief from the minimum side setback requirement for an unlawfully pre-existing non-conforming shed. While staff understands that the self-inflicted nonconformity was unintentional and that the property owner is being forthcoming relative to the property's existing conditions, the relief requested should not be granted, and the shed should be moved to a conforming location. It is apparent from the plans submitted and aerial photos of the property that there are reasonable alternative locations for the shed on the subject property. A self-inflicted nonconformity makes a conforming structure an unprotected structure, citing Martin versus Board of Appeals, Massachusetts appellate court case, and Marblehead versus Deary, an SJC case. In this case, the installation of the shed at eleven feet from the property line where fifteen is required is a self-inflicted nonconformity, and as such, is an unprotected nonconforming use. There are sharply limited criteria upon which variance relief can be granted, and none of the statutory requirements due to unique lot shape, topography, or soil conditions exist justifying the relief requested. While the installation of the shed is too close to the property line, may have been unintentional, and thus relief for the applicant may be considered desirable, the self-inflicted nature of the nonconformity does not constitute a hardship. Recommendation: I recommend the board deny the requested variance relief on the basis that there is no unique lot shape, soil condition, or topography that is constituting a hardship to the applicant. The shed needs to be relocated to a conforming location. And that is the assessment by a town planner.
Any other letters, Charlie?
No, there was one letter from a neighbor in support of the request for a variance. That's part of the package that Chris has put together. I don't have the name of the neighbor.
Yeah, we should read that in the record, please?
I'll read it. Dated Tuesday, November first, two thousand twenty-two. To whom it may concern, I am writing to confirm that we have no objection to the placement of the shed at five Sheffield Place. As the neighbor at three Sheffield Place, the shed does not cause any concern or duress. We support the Funk's appeal. Sincerely, Andrew Westgate, three Sheffield Place, Mashpee, Mass.
These are people right to the north of this property?
Yep, they would be the ones who are most affected by the shed.
All right, board member questions, comments, concerns, please?
I just need a little clarification on what, when they came before, what got approved before, and what happened?
As I recall, and you can correct me, Counselor, we low, we saw that, or the plans depicted that there was another shed or another structure that was partially on someone else's land. And also, I still see the fence, and I don't know if that's the same fence, but you did remove, I guess, the structure?
Yes.
So we asked, this board asked him to remove certain things, they did that. So they're now coming back.
But the original plan that came was, was that shed on the plan?
Yes.
Yes.
At eleven feet?
Yes.
And we approved it at eleven feet?
Well, no, we didn't approve it. We asked him to go back and remove the, another shed?
Yeah.
And a fence, I think it was?
Because I don't think I was at that one. That's why I'm trying to get clarification.
Yeah, I'm just saying that they did what we asked of them.
Yeah.
And we did not approve anything at that point. Did they, did you take a consensus of this board?
I don't think we got...
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't representing him at the time, but my...
So it got continued because they had to move that shed?
They moved the, not the shed, the eleven-foot shed.
The other shed.
And they did exactly that.
And I do believe, if I remember the, the other shed, a neighbor...
It didn't get to that point.
I don't know if they...
I don't recall, I don't remember that, but there was, again, what, what happened at that meeting is my understanding, only because I was there, I wasn't representing them at that time. But, you know, the board didn't have any objection at that time, but did see the encroaching shed, and there was either a fence or some arborvities that looked like they were on the other side on conservation land. They asked the, the applicants to remove those offending structures. They actually withdrew the project, as opposed to continuing it, they withdrew without prejudice and were, and brought it back before this board when they did what they were asked to do.
So it never got that far to talk about the eleven feet at that time?
No, they were talking, no.
No, they talked about it, yep. They talked about it.
I remember that.
It was talked about.
All right, I still need some clarification. The original, when you came originally?
Yes.
What were they coming for?
They were coming for a variance of the four feet, okay?
Of the shed, nothing to do with any, there's nothing to do with the structure, the main house structure, and there was no additions?
Nothing to do with the main house, the shed only.
They came for the four-foot variance for that?
Yep.
But then the other shed came up?
Exactly.
And they withdrew?
Yes.
And now they're back?
Because the board asked, you need to do these things first.
Okay, I'm clear now.
But if they knew that they had to come before us, when they moved the, the other shed, why didn't they come back? They had to have moved it.
I, I think I can help, because I remember, all right. So they filed with this board a plan, very similar to this, a plan that included another shed and arborvitie on it. The board looked at that and said, nothing about the eleven feet, didn't say it was approved or not approved, but we did say, we don't like the fact that you have another shed that's partially on your land and partially on someone else's land. Remove it. And there were some arborvities, partially on his land and partially on other land. We said, remove those. He's done those, he's depicted it on this plan, now he's coming back for a same application saying, I want to approve my variance that you said do this and this, and come back. And so he did this and this, and he's back.
Correct.
And this didn't have to go to building because it's two-hundred square feet? It never went to building?
I think it did go to building.
No, I think that's where David picked it up.
Yeah.
So the shed's already there, though?
Yes, correct.
So they built it below...
Pre-existing.
Well, it was Chris.
They built it, and they shouldn't have built it.
That's, that's my...
Well, so they built it without a permit?
Yes.
Okay.
I would say that is correct.
It doesn't require a permit.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it doesn't require a permit.
It doesn't require a permit.
The variance before the...
Well, it shows two-hundred square feet.
What, Mary Ann, do you know, is it under two-hundred square feet, or is it, isn't it, or is it right at two-hundred square feet?
I think it's two-hundred.
Two-hundred square feet.
Two-hundred and less, you don't need a permit.
Doesn't need a building permit.
If that's the case, it needs a permit.
No, no, two-hundred square feet, it's less.
No, I mean, less than two-hundred.
Two-hundred or less.
It only needs a zoning compliance form, that's it.
Oh, not a permit.
Right.
So it didn't, it didn't mean a permit, but it needed a zoning compliance?
The contractor built, unfortunately, it wasn't my, you know, it was a contractor who put it in the wrong place.
I thought a shed under two, I'm sorry, I thought a shed under two-hundred square feet could be closer than fifteen.
I think it's a hundred and twenty.
But it's two-hundred square feet.
Ten by twelve?
Something, it's, yes.
It's two-hundred feet or less.
Actually, I think John's right, I think it's a hundred and twenty square feet.
Ten by twelve, hundred and twenty square feet.
Correct.
So this would need a building?
So it has to be at fifteen feet?
Yes.
Or greater?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm just confused, I think this, I thought this needed a building permit to be built.
No, but it needs some sort of foundation, can't be just...
Yeah, but you need a building permit to do that. I thought over a certain size of a shed, you need a building permit.
It may be over the two-hundred square feet, this isn't over two-hundred square feet.
It's two-hundred, that's what I'm saying, I think excessive two-hundred needed a permit. It's at two-hundred exactly.
All they needed was the zoning compliance letter.
Yes, which they have.
Correct.
Yeah, so the building specifications and the zoning compliance letter, so he would have said you need a permit if you needed a permit, I presume.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah.
But then he built it the wrong spot.
Well, I don't know, the, the shed has been built eleven feet from the property line.
What's the date of that, Mary Ann?
The date of zoning compliance is four-eight twenty-two, April eighth of twenty-two.
So it would have been David, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So...
I wish we could find more of a hardship.
Why don't I, why don't I go to the audience and like to hear input from them? Come back to the board.
Well, one question I wanted to hear from Kevin, or the applicant. Tell me about my hardships.
We could, Chris.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, what was the question?
Tell me about hardships.
Sure.
There would be.
The shed was built, when we put the pool in, we followed the requirements that the town did, and the town looked at the different plans that were put out, and we made sure they checked beforehand when, before the pools put in, they check after the pools put in to make sure it's put in the same place and everything, and the shedding question and the fence and the arborvities didn't pop up until it came in December, and to your point, in good faith, we moved them, got rid of them. The hardship for us after all this is, the equipment for the pool is wired into the shed, was set up, and then as a result of that, I have, during the time the pool is being put in, and while we weren't on the property at the time the shed was put on the concrete slab, I'd been diagnosed with something called Guillain-Barre syndrome, which is a situation where your immune system attacks your nervous system, so hence the, I have some mobility issues, some days are better than others. So the hardship is, if we move the shed four feet closer, it will make it difficult for me to physically get in and out of the pool. It's the shallow end where the stairs are, and that's the only safe entrance into the pool, there's no ladder or anything like that for safety. So we have that situation. The pool has a cover over it, a permanent cover that slides on and slides off motorized, so all that would have to be undone, the shed would be moved, we're not certain where we could move it and at the same time function, so there's a lot of work that would again have to be done.
So there'd be a financial hardship?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any idea on the number of that financial hardship?
I'm sorry?
Any idea on the number?
I do not know, but we would have to bring in an electrician, and then the shed company to move it again.
The pool company, the equipment?
Yeah, there'd be significant work and...
The apron.
And a new slab, too, right?
Probably so.
Yeah, you'd have to cut into the apron.
There's a lot of things we'd have to do.
What's the distance from the front of the shed now to the edge of the pool? The way it stands now? It's not on, it's not scaled?
Ten feet.
Ten feet?
Yep.
Okay. Was there, there was obviously, there was a building permit for the pool?
Yes.
And that got signed off, was the shed not in when they signed off on the pool?
A shed was signed off with the, the permit, the second permit?
They would sign, they signed off on the pool only.
They signed off on the pool only, they questioned the shed at that time?
Yep.
So the shed came in after the pool was complete?
Correct.
Sharon has a question.
Yes.
Well, I, I just have a comment. My husband is recovered from Guillain-Barre. It's a long recovery, but you will recover, so it's not a permanent illness.
Correct, you are correct. Situation, so you know, and you probably well know this...
It's a long recovery, I'm not, I'm not saying it's a bit, you know...
But I just learned, like, I just learned I'm supposed to have surgery on my throat for whatever, and now we're going through this whole thing because they're not sure because of Guillain-Barre if I can go through anesthesia, the anesthetic for the surgery, so it's a whole big thing, and the comment was, you could end up remapsing with Guillain-Barre, which I was...
I get that.
I did not know that, and I was shocked by it.
So my husb...
Thank you.
Just to make you feel better, after about fifteen months, he went back to work and he's fully mobile, so you will get better.
Hope so.
We're glad to hear it.
That's, that's, yeah, it is encouraging. Thank you.
I have that, but I just...
Appreciate it.
Board, have any other questions, like to go to the audience?
Is the, is the finance, financial part of it considered a hardship?
Yes, as long as it's not financial, globally, just specific on the...
Because as one member, I don't feel they did, did this intentionally. I think they got caught up in this whole permitting thing, and I don't feel like they did it intentionally, I just don't want to set a precedence by allowing something to be closer to a lot line unless that hardship is there, and so...
And on that tack, he was already here once, and this board asked him to do certain things and come back.
And he did.
And he did exactly what we...
I just don't want someone coming here a year from now saying, hey, you left that guy's shed.
Well, I, I think...
We have to have a reason why we...
I think I bite at the apple, was at the point when we asked him to do certain things. At that point, we should have, should have changed that attitude, I think.
And I agree, and I agree with your concern, but every case stands on its own.
Yeah. I think this one does have a...
This one stands on its own.
Because of the fact that they were here already.
Certainly the facts of this case are different.
I just want to cover us going forward.
I agree with you. Why don't we go to the audience? Anybody in the audience have anything to say about this application? Okay, Mr. Morris is not here, so I'm gonna go back to the board, do you have any further questions?
I have one of Chris. It's just, I simply don't know the answer, Chris. In the report from Evan?
Yep.
He talks about a self-inflicted nonconform, which we agree, it was self-inflicted, unintentional. We have what we have. It makes a conforming structure, then in quotes, he has, an unprotected structure. What is...
Well, that means that it, unlikely that this board could grant a written finding down the road if they wanted to expand the shed, so it's a, it's, you know, it's not a, you know, when you talk about pre-existing nonconforming structures...
You could not come back and claim that, oh, it's a pre-existing non...
Exactly.
Because we would sit there and say, no, it's self-inflicted. You created the pre-existing nonconforming, because there is no pre-existing...
Right, so they couldn't, they couldn't come back to this board and say, we want to expand the shed or something of that nature.
That's what I thought it was, I just wanted to make sure so...
Or extend out to the house to be eleven feet.
Exactly, something like that.
Exactly right, so exactly, exact, that's the...
Should we put that in any motion we make?
It probably would make sense, and I'll tell you why, if twenty years from now, when there's nobody on this board, and they sit there and say, but our shed's eleven feet off, why can't our, we're gonna do a razor replace, we're gonna go eleven feet off the sideline, right?
I agree.
We should put something in the record, which is on the registry of deeds record that says, hey, wait a second, that's not pre-existing nonconforming.
I totally agree.
So if you were to make a motion, Charlie, could you make sure that you include in that motion the statement that we are not creating a pre-existing nonconformity in reference to this eleven-foot setback?
Let me, let me ask a question, just to make sure that I, I cover it all. Under number two in the motion, it said the board issues a variance in the amount of, in the number of feet?
Four feet.
With the understanding that this variance granted by the board at this time is unprotected for the future?
I'm concerned about what he's, I'm concerned about that, because as soon as this board issues a variance, we're now creating a nonconforming, pre-existing...
No, it's not pre-existing.
I get your argument, twenty years from now, I don't even care what you put in that motion, you're gonna come in and argue in front of this board, if this board gave the right to that eleven-foot setback.
Right.
See, I'm having...
You know where I'm going with this, Counselor.
Charlie, if we say it correctly, I think you've covered it.
Oh, boy.
How do you say it?
Well, I'm not against it per se, and I think we should give it a chance, or a shot, but my concern is, is it's not bulletproof, just so you understand.
Well, I think what, what you would do, I mean, I think just putting the notation on there for the board, because if I, if somebody down the road had to come back, they'd have to modify the variance or seek a special permit, and that would be on the record that you've noted that...
It is certainly worth noting, and it is certainly, I'm just saying it's not bulletproof.
It may not be, but...
I'm sure you, so, Charlie, do you know how to, to make that to, you need to verbalize that in a way that it is on the record and will be recorded and such, right? If you were asked to make a motion, and I'm gonna ask to close this public comment next.
I mean, I guess you could say something like, this variance does, does not create any grandfathering, you know, rights for the, for the single-family dwelling, you know, something to that effect.
Let me see just if, if, I don't know whether we will or we won't approve the request for a variance, if then we make sure that we all agree as to the nature of the variance granted under these specifics.
I would say something to the effect, the variance is for setback for the five-foot relief of the, of the...
Four feet for the shed.
Shed only, and does not create any new nonconformities or any future pre-existing nonconformities.
Yeah.
Do you write that down? Because I can't say it again.
No, and, and does not...
Does not create any future pre-existing non... I think the words are, does not create any future pre-existing nonconformities.
Right.
So somebody can't come back in here and say, there's a pre-existing nonconformity of eleven feet, I'm gonna build a house within eleven feet, or build another shed within eleven feet.
And by the way, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, every case...
Yeah, but no, it has nothing to do with that, Billy, in this.
It does.
Not if we don't know in twenty years, we're not here, and it comes to the board, the board's not gonna know that we're still here.
We agree with you, Billy.
Well, that's a good point, you're still here.
So you...
I think I can get it, but I stand to be corrected in the middle of my putting it all together.
Totally understand. Can I get a motion to close public comment on this hearing, please?
Motion to close public hearing.
Do I get a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I get a motion in reference to the application?
Let me first ask, four feet, five feet?
Four feet.
Four feet, okay. I think I have it somewhat under consideration here. Thank you. To make a motion, five Sheffield Place owners Christopher P. Funk and Donna M. Funk request a variance under one-seventy-four dash thirty-one of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a two-hundred-square-foot shed on property located in an R-five zoning district, MAP twenty-nine, parcel one-fifty, Mashpee, Mass., with the following conditions. The board has to vote to determine if the applicant leads to conditions of a variance under Mass. General Law's forty A, Section ten. Relating to the soil conditions, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, one, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance or bylaw would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or appellant, and that, two, desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of such ordinance or bylaw. Number one, site plan prepared for Christopher and Donna Funk Project Five Sheffield Place, Mashpee, Mass., sheet one of one, scale one inch, equals twenty feet. Date, August two, two thousand twenty-three. Drawn by J.J.F., checked by MCC, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, drawing title, existing conditions, plan stamped and signed by Matthew C. Costa, number five two-two eight-two. Now, I'm gonna put another number two following that, and the zoning Board of Appeals, having read into the record the report of Evan Lera, the town planner, number three, the board issues a variance in the amount of four feet, and it is noted that the issuance of this variance is not protected as to the future and does not create any future pre-existing nonconforming use of the property.
No, that would be pre-existing nonconformities, or...
Or, yeah.
Or structures.
Yeah, for structures, yeah.
Just the word nonconformities?
Well, pre-existing, would not create any future pre-existing nonconformities for the property, period. So that would be structured, that would be for anything, house, another building, another shed, nothing.
Okay.
What he said.
Mary Ann, you, you have that? Okay. All right, number three, condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and building department comments. Actually, that should be number four and not number three, because I added an additional two, and I think that covers the proposed motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. George, would you like to read the next continued public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. It's been all about two weeks. Sign some paperwork.
We got signatures.
Signatures. There you go.
How do you pronounce that?
Ashman.
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 Thank you.
I thought.
I knew that.
Ashman.
I'm familiar with John's pond, I should know it.
I know it. What's it?
Why does it look the way it does?
I know.
It didn't, I would.
It'd be gone.
Chris only had the one.
Wow, amazing.
Good.
Uh, one second, I just got to get that document back.
Coming.
I know. No rush.
Sorry.
Okay, George, would you read 14 Ashman Avenue into the record, please?
14 Ashman Avenue, owner Joseph T. Marino, request a written finding under 174, Section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a dormer over an existing garage and a deck addition to a preexisting nonconforming structure on property located in an R5 zoning district, map 49, parcel 104, Mashpee-Mass, continued from January 10th, 2024, hearings at the request of the board.
So, sir, you were here a couple of weeks ago, would you please tell us the outcome of that while you're back, if you can just outline that?
We had to come back because the assessors had the original structure assessed as a four-bedroom, which it was not, it was only three bedrooms. So we've complied with all the requirements with blueprints and a preexisting floor plan to prove that it's only a three-bedroom right now, and we're adding a bedroom above a garage.
Okay. And could you both say your name and your involvement in the project, please?
I'm Glenn Fazino.
And my name is Joseph Marino, I am the owner, and I wasn't here at the first meeting, but the, the purpose of this project is to utilize the empty space over the existing garage that is, that currently has a very low aft ceiling. This can be achieved by dorming out the aft garage roof while maintaining the exact same footprint of the existing structure. So we're asking for a permit for a family room and a bathroom in this space. There was four areas of concern from the town that we addressed, and we rectified. The first, like, as Glenn said, was the Board of Health, and that was rectified, that was corrected, and this room would make it a four-bedroom, which is acceptable by the Board of Health and meets the requirements of the septic system. The second thing was the parking. If there was ample parking, we have a huge driveway, approximately a third of the lot, measuring 36 feet wide by 110 feet long of hot pack bluestone. It's, we're capable of putting nine cars in the driveway if we wanted to. The third area of concern was rainwater. All the rainwater stays on our property, nothing goes into the, into the street. The property slopes back towards the, towards the home and off to the side. But we also had the architect drawing gutters and downspouts to address any, any concerns about rainwater.
Didn't that come from the DPW?
Was there a note from the DPW at the last meeting requiring?
No, sir.
There was not?
No, sir.
Why don't we do this? If it's okay with you, John, maybe we can, do you, can you read all the letters in the record? And, and I'm hoping that if in fact DPW had a comment.
Why don't we let him finish yours?
Oh, I'm sorry?
Why don't we let him finish?
Oh, okay, well, go ahead, I was just.
Okay. I'm sorry to jump in.
No, that's okay. And the last area of concern was with the egress. I met with our building commissioner, Dave, twice, and we altered and updated the plans. Dave and the board wanted the main egress to be unobstructed, not going through the bathroom on the original plans. He wanted unobstructed through the main house and not going through the bathroom. So we simply, on the new plans, moved the bathroom down about four feet, and we put a wall in the existing upstairs second bedroom, so that gives a clear, you know, unobstructive egress through the main house. And the second egress is through the.
And I think we have something.
I think we got a comment from.
Yeah. Charlie, are you all set?
Yeah, that was it. I met with Dave twice, and he, he looked it all over, and he was happy with everything. We had the architect redo all the plans.
Charlie, why don't you read everything in the, the letters in the record, please?
Board of Health comments received 2824, 14 Ashman Avenue. Board of Health, room over garage would be fourth bedroom. Septic is designed for four-bedroom house, remain four-bedroom, no further comment. Second is from Dave Morris, dated 2624, 14 Ashman. The proposed changes to the existing floor plan provide a continuous and unobstructed path of travel to the primary egress and is acceptable. No other comments from Dave. And the comment from Evan Lera relative to 14 Ashman. The subject property is improved with a lawful preexisting nonconforming single-family dwelling off of Ashman Avenue near John's Pond. The lot contains 11,250 square feet of upland area where 80,000 square feet is required. All setbacks currently conform with the exception of the side setbacks to the existing garage, which is lawfully preexisting due to the issuance of a variance by the Board of Appeals. The applicant proposes to alter the preexisting nonconforming structure by building to the rear of the garage a deck instead of stairs, presumably to facilitate a second means of egress, the habitable living space above the garage. This alteration is minor in nature, however, the applicant need be aware that according to the Board of Health, no bedrooms can be added to the property without an upgrade of the septic system on site. Those are the three that I have.
And we have nothing from DPW, correct?
I don't have it here, I don't remember whether we received anything. I didn't see it before.
Well, board questions, please?
Well, I think the last sentence that you just read about the bedrooms in the property, that's been straightened out, right?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
So, okay. I've got nothing.
I've got nothing.
All right, I'm going to go, audience, please. No one in the audience. So my only question would be, is the water issue, and I don't know, did we know, excuse me, I have some frog in my throat.
She typically does in that neighborhood, say she's, when that neighborhood is, she, Catherine usually does ask.
I'm wondering, did, I'm wondering, did we have anything back then from DPW?
Are you putting in downspouts and stuff?
We are.
Yes.
And we had the architect draw in all the gutters.
But did you put them into a collection system?
Any catch bases, any dry wells?
Did you put any catch bases?
We can if you want, but.
Well, I'm just concerned that the DPW.
Not a tropical water travels in that direction.
I'm just concerned that the DPW, sir, at your last submittal, had a comment, and I don't have it in front of us today, that said, we want that collection system on the site.
Can we add that as a note?
Yeah, and I just don't know if in fact DPW made that note at your last, at your last public hearing. When you opened the public hearing, at least the gentleman's doing your construction.
Yeah, there was no, there was no comment from the DPW about gutters at all.
Typically, she has an issue with that neighborhood.
Normally, it wouldn't come up without her sending something to us.
Yeah, typically, she does.
And she historically does.
Comment on that.
Why don't we do this, to be on the safe side?
We can condition.
Yeah, I'm o, as the chair, I'm okay to move this forward, but I'd like to see you add a collection system at the end of those leaders.
Sure, sure.
A pretty straightforward system, like to make sure that water is kept in the lot. So, do you have an engineer for this site?
Well, is the site, there's, there's a survey.
Yeah, well, survey, yeah, I'm just looking at, I'm wondering if there's an engineer, though.
I don't think they're required.
No, we don't have an engineer. All right, well, if you could just submit, well, we can condition it, I know.
Just condition.
So prior to the issuance of a bill, you're just going to have to show a collection system at the end of each leader.
Why don't we, why don't we condition it on approval of what they're doing by the DPW? As long as the, you said they didn't comment on it.
Yeah, I don't, excuse me.
He's happy with it.
I'm fine with that.
I don't understand why the DPW would ever comment on the water, because it doesn't, it doesn't drain towards the street at all.
On the street at all.
Is guessing that area, is there's an issue?
And at the end of the driveway, there's actually a burn, so nothing coming down the street can come on, come.
Is it public?
All right, is it a public, are you?
Assume it's public.
Yeah, yeah. Generally, when you're on a public road, even in some cases where water is because of grading on that lot, I've seen the DPW director ask for leader basins. I've actually seen her do that. Now, I'm not so sure if she did in this case or not. So, I think I'm, I'm, I'm willing to go along with what John says, which is.
Final approval by the DPW.
Final approval by DPW. If she puts her hands up and says, you know what, I'm fine with it with no drainage, I'm fine with that. If she says, I want drainage, then you just put the drainage.
That way it'll save you if she says you don't have to do it.
Yeah, sure. This, this'll work, I think you'll be fine.
That way you won't have to come back and.
Beautiful. All right, so we went, I already went to the audience, right? All right.
Yep.
So Charlie, you, you understand this, that one of the conditions would be that the, he has to seek and obtain approval from the DPW director in reference to water remaining on his site?
Yeah, under the condition of final approval by the Department of Public Works.
Yes, and she may say, I'm fine with it the way it is, she may say, I want drainage. If she wants drainage, he does a drainage, she seeks her approval, he does not have to come back to this board.
Correct.
Okay? So I'd like to get a motion to close this public comment for this application, please?
So moved.
Second, all is, I mean, who second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the actual hearing.
Okay, relative to 14 Ashman.
Ashman.
Ashman, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Ashman Avenue. Owner Joseph T. Marino requests a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a dormer over an existing garage and a deck addition to a preexisting nonconforming structure on property located in an R5 zoning district, map 49, parcel 104, Mashpee-Mass, with the following conditions. Motion. Number one.
Bless you.
God bless. The board has determined that the applicant needs all conditions of a written finding under Mass General Law's 40A, Section 6. Number two, plot plan 14 Ashman, how am I doing?
Good.
Okay, Avenue Mashpee-Mass, prepared for Joseph Marino, prepared by All Cape Septic and Survey, date August 19th, 2023, revised October 28th, 2023, and December 9th, 2023. Stamped and signed by Stephen Moore, professional land surveyor, date 12/11/23. Number three, garage dormer addition slash floor plans, prepared for Joseph Marino, 14 Ashman Avenue Mashpee-Mass, prepared by Architectural Services, Bruce Devlin Design. Number four, condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the DPW, Board of Health and Building Department, and final approval to be obtained from the Department of Public Works.
In reference to.
In reference to onsite water. Thank you. Any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, the board finds that the proposed project under 174-17 is not substantially more detrimental than the preexisting nonconforming structure or use to either the town or the neighborhood, and there is adequate land area to provide sufficient parking as may be required.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. So you understand you need to go to DPW, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Signatures, please.
It's next. Pretty sure.
Oh, there's more, George.
Send it. Send it.
Oops, sorry.
Yeah.
Or you can't write.
No, I can write.
Can't sign checks?
I can do that. It just feels weird.
You can't write to the pen?
Especially when you know.
Bob, could you read 18 into the record, please?
Sure. 18 Nesshob Road, owner Eli I. Illen, requests a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a 360-square-foot addition to a preexisting nonconforming structure on property located in the R3 zoning district, map 125, parcel 105, Mashpee-Mass, continued from January 24, 2024, hearings at the request of the board.
Mr. Chairman, board, good evening.
How are you, sir?
Good, thank you.
If you could tell us why it was extended?
So, there were two additional things was, were requested. One is to update the plan with new numbers on lot coverage, and another is to send the letter from survey to Conservation. Two things were done, so the plan is updated and was provided, and the letter was sent, and now I'm back to reconsider and I'll look forward.
So Charlie, could you, would you please read any documents, letters into the record, please?
I will. Board of Health comments received 2824. Board of Health, no increase in flow, no new bedrooms. Building Department, Dave Morris, 2624, 18 Nesshob, no issues. And there were two emails from Drew that were part of what was sent out before the meeting that I don't see here. And basically, what they indicated is that the lot is within the wetlands jurisdiction as it lies partially within the 100-year floodplain. Any area of lot within 100 feet of the flood zone line is also jurisdictional. Proposed addition will require permit application to Conservation. Now, I don't have anything from Conservation, so I don't.
Have you been to Conservation?
Yes, the Conservation.
Did they continue it? Do you have to go back?
So, there was a petition for a written finding, I believe, from Conservation from the meeting in December.
Did they ask you to come back? Do you have to go back again? To Conservation?
They didn't ask.
Charlie, did you say there was not a letter, or is it?
I don't have anything in my, in my file from Conservation.
Were there comments from Conservation?
Weren't there comments from Drew on this one?
I had comments from Drew.
We, yes, yes.
Indicating it, Conservation had jurisdictional.
Right. So, are you saying that you went to Conservation? And, and what was the outcome when you went to Conservation?
So, basically, after the last meeting, you requested that I would send a letter from the survey saying that 100% of the lot in the flood zone.
All right.
That specific letter, to Conservation for their review. I did, and they responded over the email that at the meeting and at the hearing by Conservation, they consider only those documents that were provided at the time of the meeting, and this letter wouldn't be attached to my file, and that's it.
Well, so we have.
So do you have to go see them again?
Well, Drew was depicting that he does.
Yes.
Drew was saying in his letter that he does. That's the concern I have.
It, it, his, Drew's email said that.
You should read that out.
Because, I don't have the email, I just have my summary of it.
We have the, so we have an email somewhere, right?
I can read it.
From Drew. Okay, you want to read that, please? Let Sharon read it.
All right. 18 Nesshob Lot.
Nesshobie.
Nesshobie. Okay, we can correct me, other side of town. Lot is within wetlands jurisdiction as it lies partially within the 100-year floodplain. Any areas of the lot within 150 feet of the flood zone line is also jurisdictional. This proposed addition will require a permit application to the Conservation Department. So you had to apply for a permit.
Now, Conservation.
So we are, we have been put on record that Conservation has stated to, that you need to file with them in order to move forward with this project.
This email was dated February 12th.
So this is additional, or permit, or I again need to apply there, because I already did once, and they issued the decision on that.
So do you have something that states in writing that they issued a decision from them?
Yes, so there was a request for determination, as I recall.
A determination of applicability?
Yes.
And do you have a negative determination?
Yes.
Can I see it, please?
Uh, is it this one?
He might just have to go and disbar an RDA permit.
I just, I don't, it's a contradictory.
I know.
Something isn't making sense.
We got this yesterday from Conservation.
Yeah.
Well, Drew is not really clear, he doesn't say he has to come to the board, he's just saying he needs a permit.
As of two, yeah, but if he gave a negative determination of applicability, why would he be writing a letter two days ago?
The proposed addition will require a permit application to the Conservation Department.
Well, I, I really want to see this negative determination.
Yeah, yeah, and it was.
Take your time, no big deal.
Exactly. This is a location certificate, that's.
Because the documentation that this board has is contradicting that negative determination.
Yeah, I think it's skeptical. This has to go back to.
Well, I want to see.
Drew would either say, I'm, we've approved it, we haven't approved it.
Well, you would, I don't understand why Drew two days ago. I don't understand why Drew two days ago said that when... I just want to see what the applicant has.
I would think he would have said this is... He just has to file for an RDA, but he's not saying that.
No, no. Or he would have said he filed for an RDA, and it's a negative, and we're all set for the applicant, but I'm...
If it's within a hundred fifty feet, I don't know why it wouldn't...
Yeah, I don't have it with me, I believe.
Well, sir, here's our issue as a board, right?
Is it that or not?
Let me see, please.
Or it's a different... Because it should be a file.
Now, that's a different document. Yeah, it's a different document. So what you need... So we have been put on record as of two days ago, am I correct?
The twelfth, two days ago.
That Conservation has stated that you need to go talk to them and possibly file whatever, whether it be determination of applicability or... I don't know, you may... But that's between you and Conservation. This board cannot move forward without you satisfying Conservation's concerns.
Comment. Please. And probably filled in.
Now, when was this?
This is dated January nineteenth.
So that's... It's before this. So let me just say this. This right here is February twelfth. So this is the controlling document, because this is January nineteenth. So we take that and put that here, we look at February twelfth. If February twelfth says...
I would like to see it, read it, just to see what his comment was, to see if it clarifies what Drew said.
I mean, I only tell you, lot is within... This is February twelfth, which is two days ago, right? So this... And I'll read it again, just so we everybody understands. It says, lot is within wetland jurisdiction as it lies partially within the one hundred year floodplain. Any areas of the lot within one hundred and fifty feet of the floodplain flood zone line is also jurisdictional. This proposed addition will require a permit application to the Conservation Department.
Sounds like they're going to go to Conservation.
You've got to go to Conservation.
I'm just curious what Dan said.
That's prior to... That means nothing.
But I just want to see what Dan said, if he's just backing up what Dan said. That's what I'm...
Okay. So we should continue this.
Well...
So just to understand, so I went to Conservation and went to the hearing. At the hearing, they issued negative determination.
When did you go, sir?
That was in December.
So let me see.
Now, they sent another letter in February saying that, oh, I need to do something else.
Would you... I mean, it's right here. So if you want, I'll read it to you again, if you'd like. And I'm not being obstinate, I'd be more than happy to read it to you, just so you understand, that this is an email as of February twelfth, two days ago. And it says, in reference to your lot, lot is within wetlands jurisdiction as it lies partially within the one hundred-year floodplain. Any areas of the lot within one hundred fifty feet of the flood zone line is also jurisdictional. Here's the big statement. This proposed addition will require a permit application to the Conservation Department. Will require, meaning you haven't applied for or obtained.
So the negative determination means that this permit wouldn't be required?
If you had gone to Conservation and filed for a request of determination of applicability and received a negative determination, I would not have... We would have not have received this piece of paper.
Dan's letter, I know it's pre-dating, it says that it was a negative determination, but I don't know why...
This is from Drew, he's...
That's why it's...
I don't know what to do for you, sir.
But if you read that, which you didn't want to read it because it was pre-existing or pre...
I mean, he's...
It does say there was a negative, but I don't...
I get it, but the...
Is that from... Who's that from?
Dan, his assistant.
D A.
Things have changed.
Yeah. I can only tell you that the Conservation agent...
Okay.
This is his assistant. The Conservation agent has said you are required to have a...
Hearing.
A permit application to Conservation.
Is that a hearing?
It's a permit.
Is a permit application a hearing for Conservation?
He may make an application, it might be a determination of applicability.
Well, that's what Dan's letter says he has to do, is an RDA. And they determined it, that it didn't need...
Yeah, and I already have it, and I can provide it, probably have it as well.
I know you don't want to read that, but I would read it.
No, 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 I would more than happy to read it, but even if it says nothing's required...
It's just not... I just don't think Drew was clear on what he means by a permit application.
I think...
I don't know if it means a hearing.
I'm not comfortable voting on this until we hit this issue.
Well, I don't think it can be declared, then. It says this proposed addition will require a permit application, so he's got to apply for some permit from Conservation.
Yeah, but that's not a hearing.
It may be.
That's what I'm saying, is Andrew is not clear with us.
Yeah, I agree.
Needs to go back to get clarification.
And that's why I'm saying that has to happen.
Of what exactly he needs.
Could I suggest one other thing?
Sure.
Part of why you were back to see us is because we didn't have the proper numbers on the plan relative to what you had submitted before.
Looks like they are proper now.
Yeah, and all I'm going to do is, just so we may not have to cover this again, Evan also wrote relative to the Shoba road. And the comments that he wrote, perhaps we should put that in the record now.
Go ahead.
We'll save perhaps another aspect later on when you come back.
Oh, if he's going to withdraw, I'm not withdrawing, if he's going to...
Well, I mean, I think what Charlie, what you're meaning is if there's any other issues, let's talk about them down.
Yeah, yeah, to find out what issues we have, what issues we don't have.
I think it makes sense.
Okay.
The issue continues.
Evan, in his report, indicates that there are issues relative to the plans, relative to lot area, frontage, non-conformities. And the applicant has indicated to the ZBA that determining this and deleting it on the plan is impossible. Evan indicated that he disagreed and asked the applicant to amend the plan accordingly. The applicant does cite a two thousand fourteen flood map, states that the site is within flood zone AE, however, the extent to which it sits in the flood zone remains unclear. The floodplain zone overlay cites flood insurance rate maps updated July sixth, two thousand twenty-one. The applicant submitted a letter indicating the entirety of the sites in the flood zone. If that is the case, then the plan should indicate so and calculate lot coverage accordingly. Absent these technical issues relative to the plan's notations, the planning department foresees no substantive issues relative to the request to continue, extend, or alter the pre-existing non-conformities currently present on the site. With the exception of the setback to water and wetlands, all of the setbacks side, front, and rear conform with the requirements of the bylaw, the plan proposes a twenty-four-by-fifteen foot addition to the west of the existing home. This will increase the lot coverage by structures modestly. Please consider minimum lot area, minimum frontage, setback to water and wetlands, and lot coverage. Recommendation, planning department suggests that the proposed continuance, extension, or alterations proposed would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than existed previously, and that the board can grant a written finding. Please be mindful of a potential lot coverage non-conformity, and ensure if it exists, that the non-conformity is considered in your deliberation and motions. So it appears that the plan as submitted conforms to the request made by Evan.
This plan clearly depicts that a hundred percent of it's in the floodplain, and then he goes into lot structure, which we asked him to do. So I think the plan on that basis meets it. The problem we've got is Conservation.
Yeah, great. Okay, that's fine.
It's conflicting.
Yeah, there's conflicting information. So, sir, would you like to extend to our next meeting, or would you like this board to move forward in reference to your application? I think this... I think it would be a wise thing to ask for an extension.
So just to understand my next steps, to go to the Conservation and/or to provide the negative determination, is that the right idea?
I would bring up this document, which is from Drew McManus. It's an email, February twelfth. The board's in receipt of it. It says, again, this proposed addition will require a permit application to the Conservation Department. I would go see Drew, and I'd say, what do you need me to do to make sure that the ZBA has a document that nothing else has to be done in reference to this application, in reference to Conservation?
Why don't you give him that?
Do you have...
Yeah, because I don't have this email.
Do you... Is this a... Can you make a copy, or can I give him this? All right, here you go.
Get an email.
And you know what? I'm going to... Here it is, right here. You need him to retract that.
Okay. And Deb, just getting another here.
I'm saying that it would be in your best interest, in my opinion, to ask for an extension until our next public... Until our next meeting. And I would take care of that aspect. It would seem to me that all other aspects are... Have been taken care of.
I think so.
So I would presume, I'm only one member, that if you take care of that at your next... The next meeting of this board, if you choose to ask for an extension, you will possibly obtain an approval. Again, I'm only one member.
Okay.
But I would ask for an extension, but that is certainly up to you.
Mary Ann can let us know when that next availability is.
I'll ask for extension, and I think the next availability is March as a original of the plan, right?
When is it, Mary Ann?
March thirteenth.
Would you like to request an extension until March thirteenth, did you say?
Yes, please.
March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Can I get a motion to accept this gentleman's extension?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So you've got an extension, sir, until March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four?
I'll have a favor.
Oh, I'll have a favor.
Aye.
So what I would recommend is that you have that removed from that piece of paper, please. And that we get something from Drew stating that he is satisfied with your application, there's no need, no further need of Conservation to intercede.
Okay.
Right.
All right. Thank you very much.
That's clear, thank you.
There you go.
Drew wasn't real clear with that. He'd like kicked that thing out quick, and it was a little vague.
All right. Let's see.
You would think he would have said this to file.
Actually, I just did. Charlie, would you like to read Seventy Alma Road, please?
Before I have to step down on this, I think it's being continued.
Oh.
If you want to leave it on, if it continues to vote on?
Um, that's up to you, your call.
If he just can... I'm not going to vote, but...
That's up to you.
I'll just stand here.
All right. So would you read Seventy Alma Road, Charlie, into the record?
Yep.
And so sitting on this meeting will be the four regular members, and how about George? There you go. Charlie, if you would read it, please.
Okay, Seventy Alma Road. Petitioners Patrick and Julie McNamara, request a special permit under one seventy-four seventeen point one and one seventy-four thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure and replace it with a new single-family structure on property located in an R-three zoning district and the Papanesett Overlay District. Map one one seven, parcel one six one, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, Henry F. Selloets and Marilyn T. Selloets Irrevocable Family Trust. Received letter from attorney requesting a continuance until March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four hearings.
So do we have that letter?
Uh, I do not.
Counselor, would you like to present, please?
I don't have the letter in front of me, but Attorney Christopher Corain, again...
We have it.
Mr. Chair, well, we are requesting a continuance because this has not gone through Conservation yet.
All right, I have the letter.
Why don't we read the letter into record, please?
Dated February sixth, two thousand twenty-four, regarding Patrick McNamara, Seventy Alma Road, D H J M Bonby. As you know, we represent the owners of the property referenced above. I hear... It is hereby requested that the hearing scheduled for February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four be continued to March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, as the applicant will not be appearing before Conservation Commission until February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Thank you for your attention, very truly yours, Christopher J. Corain.
Can I have a letter? Can I have a motion to accept the request for an extension by Attorney Corain in reference to Seventy Alma Road?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll have a second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
There you go, Chris.
Thank you.
Easy enough.
He's stepping down on that later.
Okay, so I guess, where is Scott? Scott didn't leave, that's right, there you go. So sitting on the next meeting will be all five regular members, and Bob, would you like to read the next one, which is fifty-seven Duckblind?
Fifty-seven Duckblind Road. Owners Patricia A. Marks and Andrew G. Marks. Request a written finding under one seventy-four dash seventeen, the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a sixty-seven square foot addition and a sixty-two square foot addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling growing on a property located in an R-five zoning district. Map fifty-seven, parcel forty-nine, Mashpee, Mass.
Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, again for the record, and members of the board. Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Andy and Patty Marks. They are the owners of fifty-seven Duckblind Road, which is located in the R-five zoning district. So this lot has approximately seventy-one thousand square feet, which is non-conforming for the R-five, which requires eighty thousand square feet. The structure itself has two non-conformities, one being this... The existing structure is only five feet, two inches from this sideline, and we are only forty-some-odd feet from the inland bank. So you're within the fifty-foot buffer to a wetland for zoning purposes in your five-point-two off that northeasterly... The northerly side yard. So those are our two non-conformities. Everything else is compliant with existing dimensional requirements. The Marks are proposing one of our two modest additions. One is a sixty-two square foot addition to the front of the house. This addition will conform with all of your setback requirements, so it's outside the fifteen-foot, it's certainly outside of the forty-feet front yard and over fifteen feet from the side. The addition here, which is sixty-seven square feet, will be ten point two feet off the property line. So it will continue to be non-conforming with the existing structure, however, it will not be any closer than what already exists at five point two. Again, it will be five feet further away than what is currently existing. There's existing paver patio there now, so it's already disturbed area. And again, we're not intensifying any existing non-conformities. If you look at the pictures that I provided, you know, it's... Again, it's very modest, they're, you know, trying to just expand the living space a little bit from the bedroom. So again, it's already in disturbed area, paver patio. We're not getting any closer to the wetland resource area than what exists now. We're not getting any closer to the side yard than what exists now. So in that regard, I would suggest to this board that we are not creating a situation that's substantially more detrimental than what currently exists to the neighborhood. I know that, just for clarification, I think similar to the last project, you have two competing letters from Conservation, so I would take the last one from Drew.
I tend to do that simply because I would think that that's the last communication, and I don't know what else to do but that.
No, that's fine, I think it's... I think it will lend clarity to this project. So, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions, I think it's a pretty straightforward project, it's pretty modest.
Why don't we read the letters into the record, including Drew's last letter, please? End letter before you want, but I think the controlling letter is the last one.
The last letter, I think, is the one.
Exactly right.
All right. Board of Health, first, relative to fifty-seven Duckblind Road, no increase in flow to remain two bedrooms. We have building department comments from Dave Morris, relative to Duckblind Road, no issues. And then the two comments that we have from...
Make sure you state the date of these ones.
From Drew. And I don't have the dates, I just have my summary of each of them, and I can give the summary of each of them.
Yeah, here you go.
Okay.
I think it's important to know the dates in case...
I think the important one is the last comment.
Got it. Let me go from oldest to youngest, okay? The oldest one?
That's what makes you happy, Charlie.
Any proposed alteration of areas within a hundred and feet of John Pond or any... On top of inland bank associated with John's pond requires permit application with Conservation. After that, provided administrative approval for home additions...
This is the second letter.
This is the second.
And the last, and this?
The last one, I'll... It's here. Any... Second letter, provided administrative approval for home additions, all set for Conservation.
So it seems that Conservation's...
Conservation's on board.
That kind of answers my question on the last one.
And then number three.
You didn't write that last one.
I was saying it was just administrative approval.
Right.
Is that what he means? He didn't say that last time.
No, that's my concern.
So there's more to it last time.
This is...
This is what I was looking for from him.
Exactly.
And the last note from Drew is dated Monday, two twelve twenty-four, to Mary Ann. Hi, Mary Ann. Just FYI, I provided administrative approval for the additions to the home at fifty... Uh, any, uh, second letter provided administrative approval for home additions, all set for Conservation.
So it seems though Conservation is satisfied.
Conservation's on board.
That kind of answers my question on the last one.
And then number three-
I was saying it was just administrative approval.
Right.
Is that what he means? He didn't write that, he didn't say that last time.
No, that's what, that's my concern.
So, there's more to it last time.
This is-
This is what I was looking for from him.
Exactly.
And the last, the last note from Drew is dated, uh, Monday, two twelve, twenty-four, uh, to Mary Ann. Uh, hi, Mary Ann, just FYI, I provided administrative approval for the additions to the home at fifty-seven Duckblind, they are all set with Conservation.
Right. Any other letters?
Yeah, those are the letters.
Okay.
That's from Building.
Building, I'm, I'm sorry.
And two fourteen, fifty-seven Duckblind, from Building Department, no issues.
Okay.
I just, oh, just one other note, uh, lot coverage, we're going from one point six percent to one point eight percent, so well under the twenty percent that-
It's, it's, it's a large lot.
It's a large lot, so-
Four comments, please, four comments. Okay, audience comments. Yes, ma'am?
Come right up.
Goodbye, I'm, would you come to the mic, please, and state your name?
Name and address.
And your address, please.
My name is Sarah Flynn, and my address is forty-nine Duckblind Road, and I just wanted to say I totally have no objections.
Oh, isn't that very nice, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Okay, you said anyone else from the board?
Nope.
Motion to clo, motion to close the, uh, comment here.
So moved. So moved.
Do I have a second? Alls in favor? Motion in reference to the, uh, actual application, please? Charlie?
Yep. And by the way, there, uh, was no information from Evan relative to this?
I know that, I knew that. He did not give information in either one of these last two.
Alright, this is the, uh, motion relative to fifty-seven Duckblind Road. Owners Patricia A. Marks, Andrew G. Marks, request a written finding under one seventy-four seventeen, one seventy-four thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a sixty-seven square foot addition and a sixty-two square foot addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on property located in an R-five zoning district. Map fifty-seven, parcel forty-nine, Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass General Laws, forty A, section six, two. Site plan. Closed additions plan prepared for Andy Marks, Project Fifty-seven Duckblind Road, Mashpee, Mass. Sheet number one of one. Date January fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Revised to eight twenty-four, add zoning table. Prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, stamped and signed by Charles T. Roland, civil engineer. Number three, proposed elevations and floor plans renovations to Marks Residence Fifty-seven Duckblind Road, Mashpee, Mass. Prepared by G. M. Pietro Architects, drawn by J. J. M., date oh-one, oh-two, twenty-four. Project number two-three-four-three, sheet A-one, design sheet A.B. one, as-built floor plans. Condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health, Conservation, and Building Department comments. Any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. The board finds under one seventy-four seventeen and one seventy-four thirty-three that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure are used to either the town or the neighborhood.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Great, thank you very much, have a great day.
Chris?
Very good.
Have a good night, everybody.
True.
What'd you bring me?
Plenty of time.
I'm here.
Okay.
Good job, Charlie.
Very good. On we go. Charlie, they're making you work, I thought you retired. No. I retired from getting paid. I'm glad I'm retired. I enjoyed my work, you enjoyed your work, too.
Same here.
Can I get a motion in reference to the minutes for January twenty-fourth?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes dated January twenty-fourth.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
ZBA acknowledgement receipts.
Yes, I gave everybody, and I think everybody gave it to me.
I get it back here.
I didn't get one, but, what? Oh, I already did it? I did it right away?
You did it at the Super Bowl.
Yeah.
So you're satisfied?
Yes.
Alright. I guess we're all set, so I guess a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Alls in favor? That's it.